Seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. There are some warrants on the table. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. And do we have line item transfers?
We don't have any line item transfers, Dr. Bertheum, but we do have, I have the encumbrances to move FY-15 dollars to encumber them at this point in time because not all the invoices have come in. But we know what is remaining out there that was an FY-15 purchase. So we want to make sure that we have those funds when those invoices come in. So this is our way to do that. And they're listed by detail. So not every, every material that we've received or every service that we've received by June 30th has necessarily been invoiced to us, but we know that it is an obligation that we owe. And so what we need to do is with your permission and looking at this, we go through it item by item. You'll see DBUS on here. You'll see individuals' or corporations' names. And basically, we know what the final bills are going to be in this. We'll make sure that those FY-15 funds remain available for us to utilize.
Okay.
Okay. If it's not on this list and a bill comes in, then we have to look at FY-16 funds to be able to pay those bills. If not, that's why it's important to utilize the FY-15 because that's when the expenditure was done. So we have to look at revolving funds. But I have to once again say all the administrative assistants, as well as Ms. Cooper and Ms. Curly and the folks at Town Hall and the Accountant's Office really work diligently to make sure that we have all of these accounted for and that we know what that bottom line is and that we encumber the funds that are going to be necessary.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, we have some minutes from June 17. Did anybody have any questions, comments, changes? Okay, so we'll approve those minutes and we're up to the superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to let the committee as well as the public know we were going to have an electrical shutdown that was impacting both the high school as well as TCP today. The rain and the electrical storm that was here in the morning created a situation that didn't permit that project to go forward because it had to do with some excavation. It had to, we needed to have the electric company and to shut down the power for that excavation to go on. The electrical company was busy doing other things at that point in time. Plus, it was just unsafe conditions. So that work has been rescheduled till July 6. Now, that does start to impact on more programs as these things happen, but this is part of a construction project and this is very important work and it needs to move forward. So what our request to the folks has been is just give us as much notice as possible in order to let everyone know and we'll get the word out. So we'll be notifying extended day personnel, our parents of students attending the extended day program during the summer, that on Monday, July 6th, we'll have a close down again because we won't have any power. That means none of the life safety systems are operational and we can't occupy the building. The FLAC summer school program is supposed to start that day as well. We have contacted them and they are working to notify all their parents. We'll post this at the website. We sent phone calls to the parents of extended day students who had signed and registered for the particular day. So we'll do that full notification again just to make sure that everybody's aware. We had meetings today with teachers pre-K through 2 and 6 through 12, working with the principals. We all work down at the primary school. These are our transition teams that I've been talking about for the last several months that are now engaging in the work, looking at ensuring that we have a smooth transition and moving that forward. And so they had a very productive four hours of work today. We get together again in August. One of the things that we're working on are frequently asked questions in order to respond to those questions that our staff and faculty might have as well as the public might have around the opening of the new building and the reconfiguration of the district. So that was exciting and good work that we were engaged in today. And, you know, at this point in time, we're working hard in the superintendent's office to close out FY-15. You can see we're very close there. And then also start processing all the orders for FY-16 so we have those materials in place. I know in each one of the buildings, the custodians are busy doing the summer work that's done, some deep cleaning of offices as well as classrooms. They work in teams. We have four student custodians working with us this summer as well and getting everything in top shape. We also have a nebestis abatement project going on over Turkey Hill Middle School. So it's very busy around the district right now and we do have staff in and out. I encourage everyone, if you need to contact anybody at the school district, that you give us, give the building a call or give the superintendent's office a call because we can let you know if the offices for some reason are closed. Because there are times during the summer that the offices in the buildings are closed. But the superintendent's office is always open except when we don't have power. And then we relocate, but we can't get phones, but we can answer emails. So that's my superintendent's report. We had a good end of the school year. We've hired a new fifth grade teacher. Alisa Basaka has been employed. Alisa taught in the Wellesley Public Schools and she has a master's degree, Newton. I'm sorry, I said Wellesley, it was Newton. And she has an undergraduate degree from a fine college up in New Hampshire and also a master's degree from Boston University and has years of experience and we look forward to her joining our faculty over there at Turkey Hill. A few more positions yet to be appointed, but we're continuing to work through those and we'll let everybody know as contracts are signed and we move forward.
Thank you. Colleen, do you want to do a school building report or should we skip over that?
I have not been in a meeting since the last regularly scheduled building committee meeting and that was already reported on, so I don't have anything to add.
Okay, so we're up to old business. Additional choice openings for FY-16 is the topic. Any recommendations?
As we look at our numbers and are aware of movement at Turkey Hill Middle School, around two areas where we have lower, classes that are small to begin with. And then we've already been notified that there are students that will either be moving or might be opting out for a different educational program like charter school. We're recommending at this point in time that for the seventh grade next year, we open three choice slots and those slots would be open only to students who are currently enrolled but are moving and be provided an option to stay. The same recommendation Mr. Santri made with regard to the fourth grade moving to fifth. Our high enrolled classes where we added teachers, which are fourth and sixth grade, we're not recommending any changes there whatsoever. These put our numbers in those other classes at 21, 22 students even with the three choice openings. So we feel that's an appropriate approach. We've certainly had inquiries from parents and we see that as a good opportunity to take simply because we know that the earlier, we've practiced the earlier we can get students in under choice, we know that they continue to remain with us through the high school year. So it really does, even that number of students that are joining us, they're in the freshman and eighth grade years, it decreases the number of slots we open, the more that we retain our class enrollments at those other grades. So those were thoroughly vetted between Mr. Santri and looking at enrollment trends. And so I want to support that recommendation and urge you to support it as well. It wouldn't be wide open. It would be only open to students who are currently enrolled but are moving. We do that at the high school, as you're aware, from 10th grade on.
That's three in fifth grade, three in seventh grade?
Three in fifth grade and three in seventh grade.
Are there any questions?
Going into seventh grade, yeah.
Right, question. So that would mean students that are moving. So it would basically wouldn't mean any new students then? I'm trying to...
So if we were, if a student, if student's family was, say, going to move to Shirley,
Right.
then they could continue to go to Lunenburg and our enrollment wouldn't change.
But they become...
But they would be a choice student.
Okay. That's what I thought you were saying. I just wanted to declare.
But we're not opening it up for additional choice applications.
It's for those students that are currently, have been enrolled and their families are moving out of district that we will let them open the spot so they can stay?
For three of them.
For three of them going into fifth grade and three going into seventh grade.
There would be an option to stay.
And the class sizes will remain at, in the low twenties?
Yes.
And the families have all requested that?
The families have expressed a desire that they be allowed to remain. We have not informed them that they can. We, in fact, we haven't even informed them that we're bringing it to the school committee.
Any thoughts or concerns, comments?
I'm just wondering why they moved out of Lunenburg and they still want to stay in our district? I, you know...
I can imagine why they want to stay in the district. I have no idea why they're moving out of town.
Yeah, I, local enough where they could still come into our district.
Right. Yeah, it could be, you know, I won't speculate.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have the personal circumstances of, we just know that they have relocated out of Lunenburg but would have expressed a desire to stay and we've said we don't have any choice of openings at this time. You know, the communities around us, it's pretty typical practice. In fact, that's why we've seen with more rentals in town, an increase in the number of students that are counted on choice rolls going out because students are allowed to remain when they make the movements. And it's, you know, parents look for stability. We're not, we're not doing this to accommodate specific parents. We're stabilizing numbers. And as I said, we've opened at the middle school for choice at times when we've had lower enrollments in classes because we feel that that opportunity to be part of our educational program earlier rather than later is a benefit for the student as well as our classes as they go on up into Lunenburg High School.
I certainly think if our numbers allow it, I would be in favor of it, yeah.
As long as it's cost effective. They don't cost any extra money, these students, correct?
That's correct.
They bring in money.
No, I mean, okay. They do, a little bit.
Yeah, so it doesn't cost us anything. They don't have any special services.
What is it, $5,000, $6,000?
If they do, then the choice formula requires that their district pay for it.
Pay for, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any thought, I haven't followed the building project, Gary Lord's new project closely enough. Is that close to having families in there? My only concern is these classes now are good size.
Yeah.
If we have, I mean, there was something brought up last night on the Lunenburg Schools and Community page regarding Emerald Place because a lot of families are putting more kids in there than they say they are. So are they coming to our schools or when the new project opens at CVS, are we potentially looking at more students we may or may not be able to handle? I mean, I'm definitely, if they're going to bring in money at the moment, but I'm just hopeful that a year or two years from now, this might not come back to bite us.
We're going to have to hire new teachers.
That those classes that were normal sized now...
Because we have that one butterfly place that's going in over there too, Holmes over there. There's a new...
Have there been projections, I guess is my question? In terms of finishing and when, you know, what units will be finished when, how many bedrooms they will be potentially thinking of how many kids could go in there?
And then there's the housing development over...
Well, we have the projections. We track those over time. We know the figures of the number of students that are coming in. What's a wild card is you never know what grade level they're going to end up at. We've seen a lot of these units bring in a lot of high school age students that have continued to attend their local high school wherever they were residing before instead of moving in. Some have come into Lunenburg High School. I think the one, the one that we talked most about in terms of opening was the fifth grade because we know at the fifth grade level, we're still pretty early on in those middle school years. In fact, when we reconfigure, that'll be the end of the elementary program. Middle school will be the six through eight program. The seventh grade, we've been opening at eight. The ninth grade traditionally because we know that ninth grade transition, if we have the opportunity to open at eight, we've always opened at eight. And seventh grade has also been an area that we've opened at, at the seventh grade level. The opportunity here was created because we know we have families moving. There, you know, that's, that's a benefit for the district in terms of having a student that's been with us over a period of time continue as a student and allowing them that opportunity to continue here with us. And it's certainly something that's desired by the parents because, you know, what we hear from the majority of our parents is they're very satisfied with the educational program that they have here. We have many parents who wish in more grades that they have the opportunity to stay when they have to move. And there are all kinds of reasons that people have to relocate outside the Lunenburg community. And we don't accommodate the vast majority of them. This was just an opportunity. We know we're always up against financial challenges as we try to refresh the curriculum and stabilize the budget. And so we went through the process of talking about would it be possible to do this? And at the end concluded that three slots at both of these grade levels was a... Not, I don't even see it as any kind of potential risk really at the seventh grade level. The fifth grade seemed a reasonable way to go, given the enrollments that we're seeing there. And also knowing that at sixth grade, we'll probably again next year, we'll have some families that will opt for other kinds of learning environments for their children. And that's, you know, what our current climate in education is with charter schools as well as, as other kinds of opportunities around private schools and also choicing to different kinds of public schools as well. So it's a manageable risk.
Right. So the odds of having, you know, five or six kids show up in one grade
In one grade.
next year or the year after is very low. It's not zero.
Right.
But it's more likely that we would end up with a few in fourth, a few in fifth, a few in sixth than that they would all end up in fifth grade.
And in the seventh grade, there's a few students who are remaining, whose family is remaining in town, but the students are going to a different sort of
Correct.
you know, school situation as you mentioned. So certainly the seventh grade is a period of flux where we have students. Some leave or then it happens in eighth grade or it happens in ninth grade. Right.
The ratios there are basically, three are moving, three have selected charter schools. One new student has enrolled. So with three staying, basically, we, we are down three enrollment from what we would have been at the current time.
And it's about $30,000, right?
Between the two, yeah.
Okay, so we can talk about it more, but is there a motion in a second? If we don't have one, we won't continue talking.
Sure. So we need a motion to... The superintendent is recommending that we approve the three choice slots in fifth and seventh grade for the students who are currently, who have been enrolled in district.
That are open, are available for students who are currently, who...
Were enrolled in FY-15.
I want to make sure that we're not opening three.
Right, exactly.
Not opening and open just the ones who already attended.
I will make that motion. Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Heather, you look concerned.
I just don't want to set a precedent for parents who move out of town to think that their children are going to be able to stay in and choice in.
Right.
It's a bad precedent. I just don't like it.
Right. That's a, it's a very reasonable position. I have a hard time, given that those classes happen to be small.
But that's only their luck, this, you know, go around.
So I would, I would bet, though maybe you could, would have information, that there are other families who are moving or out of town that we are not going to be able to offer their students.
And that's where I...
That's the majority.
So we are not setting a precedent by doing this. We're just saying...
You're saying that it's circumstantial, that depending on the age and...
And the population of the class.
Right, the, right, the number in that particular grade and particular year. We may not have, you know, next year's fifth grade class, we know, will probably be large because the incoming fourth grade class is large. So it's not...
Right.
I see what you're saying.
Right.
I'm, that's the only, that's where my...
But we have the opportunity, you know...
I think that if the, there's always the watchful eye that it, that each class is staying at an appropriate size. Then, and not putting it to the edge knowing that, you know, we could have...
Right.
Then, for me, the potential income. And also knowing what these students bring in terms of, you know, the student... The schools are already familiar with each of these students and knowing what they need, so...
There's no transition. They're already here.
Right. Sometimes there might be a question mark when it's, when it's a new face that we don't know at all. So I think the money's harder to turn away as long as... What will that, if those three slots are filled, what are those classes at again, numbers?
116.
Both are 116. That's low. That's low.
With six sections or five?
Those are both five. Yep. Those are both five.
So it's 23.
22, 23.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're on to new business and we have another, we're going to talk about draft goals for the superintendent. We'll approve those later on in the year, but this is where we'll start talking about them. Ms. Colm sent around some draft goals for our enjoyment. Have you had a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Yes.
Does anybody have any comments or thoughts? This is on the website or it will be or...
They're not on the website now, no.
But they will be after we talk about them.
We can, yeah.
Okay, so the first, last year when we put together the community service learning goal, that was intended to be a two-year goal. So the first part of this is the second half of the two-year goal for community service learning. That seemed perfectly reasonable to me, but if anybody has any thoughts or changes, suggestions on that first paragraph, that would be a good time to share them.
I guess the only question I would have is if presenting in April is appropriate. I guess for the curriculum app of what's going on, I guess you can do that. But some of them might be, not be completed, so... But you would know everything that was happening and could present that and then maybe with follow-up, once they've completed them through the spring.
And it would probably be a good idea to put a date, pick an April meeting and assign the community service learning so that we track it that way, if you don't mind. Okay, the second?
I was just going to say probably that first meeting in April, so it's televised. I think that community service learning is something...
Unless it's on April Fools or something.
Well, yeah.
No, it was last, this year it was April Fools.
Oh, was it? I had forgotten already, yeah. Okay, the second piece is to put together a comprehensive curriculum update by June in history and social studies and English language arts and include in the FY-17 budget funds for the first of three years of instructional materials purchased, determined, purchased, determined, necessary as part of the update. Okay? And to prepare for science and math to follow those the following year. Does anybody have any thoughts on that goal?
The last couple of years, we've been working on maps that have been put in place across all discipline areas at the high school. The other two buildings have been working on social studies and ELA and those maps are being put up this year. But we need that final piece of our curriculum work in terms of making sure that our power standards are aligned grade to grade as well as the linking and enabling ones and refreshing the entire curriculum document that we have that's consistent with the state frameworks, which include the Common Core. So this just formalizes that as a target in terms of really drawing some closure in order to make sure that when we do the next step, which is curriculum material refreshing, that we're doing it based upon the updated curriculum. And that was one of the things that we talked about a lot this year in terms of, we started to see some requests come forward in the area of ELA and they were, you know, substantial purchases. And one of the reasons that we said we need to step back on this is because we need to do this final part before we start investing substantial dollars in terms of any new curriculum infusion, material infusion.
Are we going to put that on the website, all of the curriculum maps? So that people coming from other, you know, moving into town can look at our website and find the curriculum map?
Yeah, it's up at the high school already. It has been for a while. And this summer, we're putting this first piece up of the social studies in ELA.
Okay. What about the other schools? Are they going to put them up on their website?
Yes, those were the two schools, because as I said, the high school's completely finished. The other schools are uploading theirs.
Yeah. It'd just be nice when people come into town from another district to look at the website and find those.
Right. As they get completed, they're going to get loaded up there. Any other thoughts on that goal? Okay, the professional practice goal, this is just a modification, it seemed, from the goal you had last year?
It is, it is, because I think it's a really important one. You know, it's something that we continue want to do, those regular visits with the principals to the classrooms. But we, I know I got some advice from the school committee about reaching but being realistic, so we didn't end up in a situation where we weren't meeting the goal. So I adapted it and it represents a step down in the number per week after the first of the year when we roll into budget in particular, as well as a lot of other activities that happen after those initial months. A lot of transition work next year as well.
Well, and the testing happens in the classrooms. The teachers are prepping for the testing and...
The whole, the whole, there's many challenges after the first of the year in terms of the schedule, snow days, et cetera, et cetera, so...
I think that makes sense.
The only question I have is how do you select the classrooms that you're going? The only question I have is, how do you select the classrooms that you're going to visit?
Um, I just keep a log, and, and some of it's based upon the time that I'm in the building, and, you know, who's in specials and who are in the classroom. So it's grabbing the principal and saying, let's try to see these teachers, and hopefully the schedule matches, and that's where we go. So basically, it's based upon my list of where I've been and who I still need to see.
So you try to see-
Yeah.
Every classroom, or you rotate through?
So if I remember, last year in the fall, you had done substantially more than six in a week.
Yeah, yeah. I actually started out, I was doing six in each building every week when we started, so.
And what is entailed, when you drop in, the principal's where you're coming. Is it random when you walk in whose classroom you're going to visit?
Is it random? It's not random for me, because I have my list.
Well, you have your list.
Do the teachers know ahead of time that you're coming?
No, the teachers don't know.
They, they really, so if it's not random, the principal's not giving somebody the heads up going, hey, by the way, make sure you got your A-game going today, because-
The principal doesn't know, you know, it's dropping-
I was just curious.
Yeah, and our teachers welcome that, they're, they're always very gracious, and, it's always a, a very informative time when we're A. Those aren't formal evaluations under the educator evaluation model, those are visits. But it's a time that the principal and I, and the special education director can talk about what's going on in our classrooms, and, and you notice this is focused upon, we always focus on the level of student engagement.
No, I was just curious only because-
Yeah, no, it was a fair question, yeah.
No, because seeing everything sort of natural as it's happening day to day, because if, if, if no one really does know, you're getting a candid glimpse of what's happening in, in these classrooms every day, which is a good thing, I would think.
That's the intent.
Yep.
So given that you did so many extra in the fall, wouldn't it, I'm wondering if we couldn't push you a little further and say that you would average six per week over the course of the year.
Oh, okay. And just average it?
Right.
The entire? Yeah.
Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
That's probably a better way to articulate it. So at the end of the year, we just see what that, rather than saying three here. And that way, I can-
Average of six per year.
For the year, as appropriate.
Right.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
Mostly because I think it's really valuable to get you in the classroom, and the more that we, but we have to make it so that it's achievable for you, right?
But yet, a stretch, so.
So that's why I think, okay, think about it, and when we come up with the formal vote, which is in September, I think.
Is it?
Maybe it's August, I forget.
I think it's August, yeah.
Yeah. You can propose what you're comfortable with. Okay, and then the district improvement goal is to make sure that we have a rational transition, in summary, into the new configuration, and you have a transition plan that you've outlined. Do you want to talk about that?
Um-
Or would you like to do?
Well, I provided a copy to the, the committee, and we can certainly post this at the website as well, as a plan that we've put together of just benchmarking important topics, as well as soliciting input, providing FAQs, communicating the logistics of the move, doing all, putting together the professional development that needs to happen, and also working on staffing needs, as well as if we're hiring, as we did this year because of retirements, et cetera, staff, just make sure that that all gets managed well, because it will be a very busy time come the spring. So we've outlined it with a timeline of when things are supposed to take place, and who's responsible, and, and the administrative team will continue to work with the building-based transition teams, and we'll continue to work as a district-wide team as well, to just ensure that that's orderly, and, and people have the information they need in order to feel confident. I won't say that there won't be some anxieties and some concerns, but we're wanting to make it very transparent and open what's going to happen, and provide everybody the opportunity to get into the building as soon as we're able to, and start doing those transitions with the students. I think that's articulated as part of what we do here. We anticipate substantial completion in March or early April of 2016, which means there's a great opportunity for us to do some initial orientation to the building for students, as well as the public, because it will be in our position at that time. And the one thing that's still left to be articulated is the technology, and I know we'll be working on that in August as well.
Yep, that's coming up fairly soon. Okay. Any, any thoughts on, on the goals that you want to share at the moment? Or the transition plan? Okay, I think it's, I, I like the fact that you have a plan put together, I really appreciate the timeline column, so as we, what would be great, I think, as we go through the next several months, is when you do your transition updates, if you could use this as a tool to show us where you've, you know, what you've completed, where you see that you're making sufficient progress, if there are places where you're not making progress enough.
Right.
So that we can help understand, at least, what's going on. Okay?
And this is a start, it'll be dynamic, we'll add where we need to add, and just continue to, as I said, ensure that that's a smooth, orderly transition. This contained information, I guess I could have just highlighted, around communication, around staffing, around professional development, school schedules and calendars, the physical move itself, students transitioning, and technology.
I would just like to commend you and the whole transition team. I know you've been working on this already for months, so this is something that will be very well thought out and planned, and, you know, I think that's great. I know it's taking a lot of time, but, you know, everyone is really putting in many hours to make sure things go with as few bugs as possible.
It's very exciting and energizing work. Um, you know, the opportunities that the, the new building, as well as the reconfiguration of, of the district to the pre-K through two and three through five building are very exciting for us, so. But it, you are correct, it, it, it takes a lot of careful planning, and this particular move, I think when we've moved in the past, and even when we moved into the primary school, that was done with personnel from the district in terms of our custodian personnel, moving all the boxes, et cetera. This move is, is part of the building project, so this will be done by movers outside the district. But Mr. Londa will have his fingerprints all over it, and we know of his expertise in that area, given his, his background.
He's excellent with logistics.
He is.
Any other thoughts on this topic before we move on? Okay. Donations.
Yes, I wanted to acknowledge the donation of $5,000 from the Winter Wyman Company, and this donation actually doubled, more than doubled, after the initial discussion. And Ms. Dufresne, who works for that company, came in, and their company has a, a program where they provide the opportunity for their personnel to make donations to causes of their choosing. And so Mrs. Dufresne, over at Turkey Hill Middle School, selected Turkey Hill Middle School in technology as the focus of her donation, and when the company's president heard about that, the statement I understand was, well, that's not enough, let's move it up to $5,000. So there's a $5,000 donation that we would like to receive, and purpose for technology, as I indicated, at Turkey Hill Middle School, with gratitude.
Okay.
And I also wanted to, again, acknowledge the Chris Mackey Foundation and the Mackey Family. Again, this year, the middle school had, at the sixth grade level, the Mackey Writing Contest, and Mrs. Mackey, you know, has, and the foundation have worked hard to encourage children and students to think about how they make this world a safer place, and a kinder place for everyone. You know, Chris Mackey was killed in a random act of violence, and the Mackey Foundation has been instrumental in providing us not only funds for scholarships for kids who have written these essays and then been acknowledged by the Mackey Foundation, but also with our Tiger Program. They have been associated with that program and, and have been in our schools the last two years now, and so we wanted to acknowledge the Chris Mackey Foundation and the Mackey Family for all they're doing to contribute to responsible community membership. And there were two students, Natalie Valles and Sarah Tanny, that were the recipients of a $50 savings bond this year for their essays, so. An acknowledgement of that.
Okay. Is there a motion to thank these generous donors?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
I'll accept the, the donation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to everyone.
Yeah. Dr. Berthium, with your permission, I'd like to talk a little bit about our fundraising efforts around, with our partner, the Turkey Hill Lions Club, around the playground for the three through five students. I think everyone, I hope they're aware that the Turkey Hill Family Lions Club has been part of that project, now is our, our partners for about a month, and we're well on our way to the $54,000 that needs to be raised for that playground. Our goal is to have that playground in place by the time the, the district reconfigures, and we have students in grades three through five at what is currently the Turkey Hill Middle School, yet to be renamed. Maybe that'll happen soon, and we'll be able to talk about it easier and label it, but this playground will be unique for this grade range and for our community, and we're, through a very generous donation from an anonymous donor to date, we're $25,000 up on that thermometer. And I know that there's a band concert, that the first band concert of the year is July 6, and the Lions Club will have free hot dogs available that evening, and they'd like to have a bake, bake sale, and they'll set up, or they'll have baked goods, and there'll be a donation box there for the playground at that point in time. And I know in talking to Lisa Normandin, who's the president of the Turkey Hill Family Lions Club, she said that anybody that wants to donate baked goods, that's, they're more than welcome and encouraged to do that, and that'll just be more for people to have access to, and hopefully put some more donations in that, that box. We've also been made aware, and the Lions Club is supportive of this, that a consultant with the Ava Anderson Non-toxic, they sell various kinds of products, including bug spray and sunscreen, and they're offering 15% of their sales will be donated to the playground fund. So we're working with the consultant at this point in time, there'll be a code that individuals can use online if they're ordering these products, and that's how it will be tracked, and then that money deposited with the Turkey Hill Lions Club into the playground. So these are just some of the initial steps we're taking in terms of our fundraising efforts, and there'll be more to come on that as well.
I'm sure. Thank you. We're up to public comment. Any public comment from the board? Any public comment from our lone public? Okay. Reports, FinCom? I think it's time to appoint, reappoint FinCom members, and I need to, the school committee has a seat on the appointment committee for FinCom members.
Oh.
As, that's part of the charter.
Oh, okay.
So I'll be doing that before too long, sometime in the month of July, some Tuesday or Thursday, I think. School councils probably haven't met since school's out.
Nope.
PTO, probably, nope. Policy Subcommittee has not met, though we probably, probably in the fall. Do we need to meet before fall, do you think?
Um, I don't think we'll need to before fall, Dr. Berthium.
Okay. Last year, we had a lot to do in the summer, actually, but-
Yeah.
Not this year. Capital planning?
Nope.
Nope. Wellness?
Nope.
Pac Sound?
Nope.
Okay. Reuse Committee, I don't think was planning to meet before, between our last meeting and today. Transition, discuss, would you like to discuss in addition?
I don't think there's anything addition. If we can go back to wellness, did we make the announcement that Ms. Carolyn Finch is going to serve as the chair of the Wellness Advisory, then, okay.
Diversity Advisory has not met, and the Start Time Subcommittee?
No.
No, okay. That was easy. Items for future discussion, we still have on our agenda for August 13th, we're supposed to have a workshop to talk about district improvement, strategic plan, and updating the school's master plan and capital plan. And later on in September, or October, I've forgotten, we'll do the one-on-one computing.
Yeah.
But that doesn't matter at this point. So we don't have another meeting scheduled until the 13th of August. If something comes up that requires a meeting, we'll certainly call a special meeting, but because that meeting's a workshop, what I'd like to do is to post it as a regular meeting in case we need to-
Okay.
Just since it's such a long time from now. If we don't need to have a regular meeting, we just hold the workshop, we'll, we'll pass over that part.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Something could come up.
That would, yeah.
Because the 5th of August would have been our normal meeting, and we couldn't, we weren't going to have a quorum for that date. Is there anything else before we adjourn and come back in almost two months?
Wow.
No? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Enjoy your month of July.